Good evening. Welcome employees, staff, and viewers to the June 21st, 2012 Murfreesboro City Council Meeting. Councilman Ed Smitherman has our prayer and our pledge.
Raise your hands. Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for the many blessings that you've given us. Help us as a council tonight to make wise decisions. Help us to be leaders in our communities. Help those who are struggling tonight. We pray for those who are in your need, those who are sick. Please bless their bodies. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is founded, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, council members, before we consider the consent agenda, we have a presentation from David Ives.
Vice Mayor, Member of the Council, appreciate taking this minute. When we gave the documents to, for getting ready for this meeting tonight, I had received two different exhibits from CUD for the water line easement that is item A on the consent agenda. And I attached the wrong one to the easement form that was put out with the agenda. I had handed out to you on your table tonight is a short note from me along with the correct exhibit that has been exchanged into the original document. So when the document's signed, the correct exhibit will be there. Wanted to make that clear to everybody. I do believe this is still a consent agenda item. It's consistent with plans we've had for Joby Jackson really from the inception. But if there's any questions or certainly if anybody wants any further discussion about it, be happy to accommodate that under other business or however council would like.
Council members, do you have any questions of Mr. Ives? City Attorney? Any at all? Okay, if not, we're going to consider the consent agenda.
May I have first adoption?
Second.
Ms. Wright, Carla Rowe.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smitherman.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye. These are third readings. Consider for passage on third and final reading, ordinance 12-0-14, amending Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter 2, Administration, Section 2-76 regarding the water and sewer board. Third reading.
Move for approval. Second.
Carla Rowe, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smitherman.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye. Consider for passage on third and final reading, ordinance 12-0-16, the tax rate ordinance.
Move for passage on third reading.
Second.
Carla Rowe, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smitherman.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye. Consider for passage on third and final reading, ordinance 12-0-15, adopting a budget and the appropriations ordinance. And at this time, if there's any amendments to the budget, see I'm there, I hold your peace. Councilman Smitherman.
Yes, I know it's kind of late in the budget, but I'd like to make a motion that the budget currently has $5,000 for journeys and community living, and they had requested $25,000. I went out and toured their facility, and after seeing what's taking place and what a good job they're doing, I really would like to see if we could move it up to $10,000 rather than $5,000. And I would like to put that in the form of a motion.
This is not a new request, it's just an upgrade.
So they would be eligible, Zach, Corey, Ross, this is not the first time, and there's not any problem financially in making that happen?
Let's second that then.
Carla Rowe, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smitherman.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye. New business.
We need to vote on the budget as amended.
Oh, okay, okay.
We move for adoption of the budget on third and final reading as amended.
Second.
Carla Rowe, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smitherman.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye. Now, new business. Consider for adoption Resolution 12-R-07, approving the budget of the Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department for fiscal year 2012-2013. End discussion.
So moved. Second.
Carla Rowe, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smitherman.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye. Consider for adoption Resolution 12-R-08, approving the budget of the Stormwater Utility Management Fund for the fiscal year 2013-2012-2013. End of discussion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Carla Rowe, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smitherman.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye. Consider for adoption Resolution 12-R-09, approving the budget of the Murfreesboro City Schools for fiscal year 2012-2013, which budget includes the general purpose fund, the ESP fund, the federal project fund, the cafeteria fund, and debt service. End of discussion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Carla Rowe, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smitherman.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye. Consider for adoption Resolution 12-R-10, approving the budget of the Evergreen Cemetery for the fiscal year 2012-2013. Is there end of discussion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Carla Rowe, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smitherman.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye. We're going to consider these next three, item nine, let's see here. Okay. Consider recommendations of the planning commission with regards to scheduling of public hearings to consider annexation and zoning requests along South Rutherford Boulevard. Mr. A. Lott.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Washington. Included on the planning commission agenda for June 20th, that would have been yesterday, there were two items. These have been scheduled for public hearings for August the 1st. Because these matters involve significant economic development opportunities for the community, we'd like to kind of compress the timeline for adopting the annexation and go into the zoning process. What I'm going to recommend is that this matter for annexation of approximately 47 acres along South Rutherford Boulevard and the zone of the same property to Heavy Industrial, that the council go ahead and schedule a public hearing for August the 2nd to consider both of these items, and then to consider on first and second reading ordinances for the adoption. And then on August 2nd, after the public hearing, and after the planning commission has studied the matters, that you would be able to take action at that time. No final action can be taken until you do third and final reading and have your public hearing, so you still have opportunities to change it if necessary, but this will compress the timeline. And very frankly, I don't expect that there be any complications. This property has been studied by the planning commission once before for annexation and zoning, but because we were at that time involved in road construction and acquisition of properties, we deferred action, that would have been 2005. So with the passage of time, it's got to go back to the planning commission for study before it comes back to you. So those are my recommendations to, one, to schedule a public hearings for both items for August 2nd.
August 2nd.
And then, two, to go ahead and pass the ordinances, which are the next two items on the agenda on first reading tonight, and then before the August 2nd meeting, do a second reading sometime.
Okay, council members, what's your pleasure?
Three motions.
Three separate motions. The first would be the public hearing dates, but you can have the public hearing for both items with one motion. And I concur in August 2nd is an appropriate date.
Should be two separate motions, then, for combining the first.
It would be one motion on the public hearings.
Hearings. And one to pass.
And one for each ordinance.
Oh, okay, I'm with you. So moved. For the public hearing.
The public hearing.
Second.
Carla Rowe, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smitherman.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye. Consider for passage on first reading, ordinance 12-08-17, annex approximately 47 acres along South Rutherford Boulevard to incorporate the same within the corporate boundaries of the city of Murfreesboro Tennessee and to adopt the same plan of services.
So moved. Second.
Carla Rowe, Ms., oh, yeah, Carla Rowe, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smitherman.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye. Consider for passage on first reading, ordinance 12-OZ-1A, to amend the zoning ordinance and the zoning map of the city of Murfreesboro Tennessee as here to amend, as here to amend it and as new enforced in effect to zone approximately 47 acres along South Rutherford Boulevard as Heavy Industrial H1 District simultaneous with the annexation.
So moved. Second.
Carla Rowe, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smitherman.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, Joseph. Consider recommendations of the city attorney with regards to revisions to the employee handbook. Vacation leave, retirement, well, let's do it this way, Section 1002 Vacation Leave, Section 1002.5 Retirement, Section 103.3 Temporary Limited Duty. You're home.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. You have before you the recommendations of staff, human resources, legal, and administration to make some changes to the employee handbook. The presentations are given to you in the numerical order in the handbook, not reflective necessarily of the degree of change. You have the proposed policy as well as the existing policy in your packet. In my cover memo, I tried to identify what the changes were, again, sort of in numerical sequence rather than necessarily importance. The goal that we had in making the revision was to try and make it more user-friendly in terms of being clear. We were also trying to make sure we were consistent with the policy and philosophy that was in the changes you made last October 1st relative to sick leave and other employee leave benefits. It reflects in one potential increase in cost, but some other potentially offsetting decreases. So let me just go through them, but because there are several and they interrelate, please interrupt me if there's any one of these in the vacation leave which is unclear. The first change is to allow people as soon as they have earned vacation days, which as you recall occurs not month by month like sick leave, but on an annual basis on an employee's anniversary date, that being the anniversary of their hire date. Under current policy, employees who are out on leave at the time they complete a year are not allowed to use any of those paid vacation days until they return to work. In recognition of the fact that it is earned on the anniversary date, as noted in Change 1, we would allow such usage to take place immediately rather than waiting for a return to work. This will be a benefit to employees who are out on FMLA leave because they are ill or have had a new baby or they have a family member, if they're out of paid leave, they'd be on unpaid leave. This would allow them to earn vacation, use the vacation days they've earned during the prior year to get some pay during that period of unpaid FMLA leave. The second change is to try, second and third really, to deal with employees during their first year of employment. Because the city accrues on an annual basis, employees in their first year have no paid vacation days whatsoever. We're not proposing to change that as that would cause an increase in cost to the city. What we're proposing to do is make explicit the ability of employees to take unpaid leave during that first year of employment for up to 10 days with the commensurate number of shifts in the fire and rescue department, with the approval of the department head for more than that would require the city manager's approval, and that might impact their anniversary date. The additional change, trying to reflect the fact that employees in their first year have no benefit hours, is to change the requirement for using five days during a calendar year where they are lost. We've had employees who have no vacation in their first year of employment, they get 10 days, and then they might have to immediately use five, or they have lost them. If they were hired in November, they would have to, they would earn them November the following year and have to use five before December 31st. This allows the use it or lose it provision to not kick in to a second year of employment for new employees. Again, it doesn't cost the city anything, but it's perceived it would be a significant advantage to employees. The third item listed would allow employees who are taking a vacation and who become sick to substitute sick leave for vacation leave if they can provide proof that they in fact became sick. That would also be true for bereavement leave. Again, this staff believe is consistent with the emphasis we're, have been placing since your approval last fall on using leave for the specific purpose for which it is intended. And so that's what that does. The fourth one is something that would be providing a new benefit to employees. This is the one that would potentially have some cost. Since, as I indicated, you don't earn and accrue vacation until your anniversary date, we've had a practice of many employees not retiring or not quitting until just after their anniversary date when they have earned vacation for the prior year, because otherwise the belief is that they will be losing it. This is not necessarily to the employees' benefit or the city's if there's somebody who sort of needs to be gone for retirement or to quit. The thought is that if it was somebody who had not been fired for disciplinary reasons, that they would get a prorata payment based on the vacation they would have earned had they stayed to their next anniversary date. The reason staff thought this was appropriate and fair was because we have, as reflected in the next bullet, number five in my letter, been prorating if someone is absent, they've been losing vacation days, if they have been absent from work for more than two weeks without pay. And we are proposing to increase the loss of vacation. So we're trying to balance the proration concept. So the thought is that this would not be a matter of right, thus we can withhold it from people who are terminated for cause, but it would be a payment made to sort of even out rather than having everybody seek to hold on and just go with an anniversary date departure. As I indicated, number five spells out that the current policy on prorating vacation, you might earn it at 10 days a year, but if you have been absent without pay for a significant portion of that year, you would earn less than 10 days. That's currently been done if you are on long-term disability benefits, or you've received more than 20 days of military pay, or you've been without pay. We have not applied proration. In other words, you continued to earn vacation days if you're on long-term disability or if you're receiving workers' comp benefits. Providing vacation pay to people who have not been working did not seem to be consistent with staff and the council's philosophy about how benefit hours are earned. And so the proposed change is to reflect that attendance is what earns vacation, absence loses vacation. Because there may be persons who have already during this anniversary year been out on workers' comp or been on disability, the recommendation is that this would only be applied to lose prorate vacation if the leave is taken after the suggested effective date, which is July 1. Is, okay. So those were the changes in policy from current policy substantively. The look of the policy is different, but the elements of the policy are the same except for the ones that I have identified. You were also asked to approve a form that is used to document leave. We have been using that form after we made the changes. As part of the staff's work on the sick leave policy changes, we needed to change the form, but we realized that we had not taken the form back to you for approval. We want to get that approval now so that we can distribute the form as part of the employee handbook. So those are the changes that are proposed for the vacation leave policy. I'd be happy to answer any questions about that now, or I can go on to the other policies as the council wishes.
I'm thinking we do them all individually.
Okay, fine, then if there are any questions about the vacation, then we can, you know, take action on that one.
Any questions on Ms. McGannan?
How do we handle, just, we've got the employee handbook here showing how much vacation that you get after how many years, but how do we handle, do we allow vacation to accrue?
We allow it to accrue, except you must use five days a year. You can't accrue everything. You have to use five days minimum. That's the part that was, the requirement that you use at least five days, whether you take it or not, you know, you lose it. That was the part that was causing a hardship for newly hired persons. But, so that we have unlimited accrual, but for the five-day provision.
Okay. And then, just so, I'll keep it straight, how many, because we talked about some of this on sick and bereavement, how many sick days does each employee get?
One per month, if they are here for that month. You will recall as part of the sick leave changes, we put in proration. You don't earn a sick leave for a month where you are not here, working for, more detailed than that, the majority of that month. So you, you earn sick leave by being here, one day per month. You earn vacation under the policy as existing and as proposed more clearly, by being here for the year. So sick leave is prorated monthly, vacation leave is prorated annually.
And does sick leave accrue as well?
Yes, it does.
Okay. And what's our unfunded liability that we, or not unfunded, what's our liability that we have on the books for accrued vacation and sick leave?
I don't know that figure.
It's located in our audit. I'm not sure I've got that number.
We figure that annually. I haven't figured it for this year yet.
Okay. I'm just wondering.
Any additional questions on Section 1002 Vacation Leave before we vote? What's your pleasure?
May I refer this recommendation to the city attorney?
Second.
Carla Rowe, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smitherman.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Thank you. Section 1025 deals with retirement, and we were, staff was trying to address the potential for a double-dipping issue and for, sort of, what's appropriate. So the proposed, let me back up. Council members will recall, employees hired before July 1st, 2010, under the, full-time employees are under the city's pension plan. Employees hired after that date are under the city's retirement program. Under the city's pension plan, one cannot be receiving pension benefits and also be employed in a pension or retirement earning provision. But we don't have anything that is parallel in terms of the retirement program. So what we're trying to do in this policy change is to say that if you are drawing pension or retirement benefits, you can't be employed in a full-time position with the city. We, in addition to the benefits, staff discussed whether, particularly in light of the number of people who are looking for work and whatnot, whether it was really desirable to have the city look to its retirees to fill its positions and thought for substantive positions, that didn't seem to be desirable. So the proposal before you is that retirees can only be re-employed in seasonal positions, in part-time positions which are regularly scheduled to work 15 or fewer hours per week, trying to address the officiating, you know, in Parks and Recreation, or somebody being a school traffic guard, that if it's less than 15 hours a week, that would be allowed, or as an elected city council member, because we have had employees become council members, you know, when they're longer employees, and so that we needed to preserve that option. So the suggestion is that this would apply to people who start drawing benefits after July 1st. So that, you know, we have some people who have started to draw benefits already, who have been employed in jobs, part-time jobs closer to 30 hours a week. This wouldn't bar them, it wouldn't require a change in their employment, it would be a prospective change.
All right, council members, any discussion or questions from Ms. McGannan? What's your pleasure?
May I for approval?
Carla Rowe, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smitherman.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Thank you. Section 1033, dealing with temporary limited duty, is the other substantive policy change we want to bring to you. Again, this isn't one changing the benefits, it is trying to change the presentation of the program so that it will be more easily understood by our employees as they have recourse to it. There are a few substantive changes outlined in my cover letter. The first is to allow employees who are in their first year of employment, who are probationary employees, to participate in the temporary limited duty program. If we have an employee, and the TLD policy only applies to full-time employees, if we have somebody in their first year of employment who becomes unable to do all of the duties of their job, they're not allowed to come back with a restriction. Say, in other words, they have a restriction that says you can't lift, you know, more than 20 pounds for two months, and their job requires lifting, they would not be allowed to work or even participate in a, you know, restructured job. So the idea is that we would allow them to participate, but they would have, if the positions are in short supply, they would have a, lower on the totem pole, they'd have to take a lower priority if there were insufficient TLD jobs in a particular department. The thought being that since the charter has changed to allow the city manager to extend the probationary period for employees, if we couldn't really evaluate whether somebody could do the job in the probationary year because they'd been having to do a modified job, that the period of time could be extended so that it would be a full 12 months to evaluate them in doing the job for which they were hired. The second change is something that employees have asked for, as they have about the probationary employees, we're responding to employee requests here. The current policy says you have to be away from work for three full days before you can have a TLD job assignment. That doesn't seem really to be medically necessary now, and so that requirement was eliminated. The third thing we're doing is reflecting in the policy document, the expanded role that the city manager and human, has decided and human resources has been fulfilling in reviewing TLD job assignments to make sure that we are being consistent. There have been previously in the policy as written, that sort of has all that decision-making at the department head level. That had led to some inconsistencies which have been significantly alleviated by trying to have one-point review in the human resources department, and so the policy reflects that functional change. And then, as I indicated, because TLD is voluntary and is not a matter
Any discussion, council members, on Section 1033, Temporary Limited Duty? All right. It's your pleasure.
I move that we accept the attorney's suggestions.
Second. Carter Rose is right.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, before you go on, while y'all were speaking, Mr. Cromley pulled up the prior-year audit report on his iPad, and to answer Mr. McFarland's question, for fiscal year 11, we, for the, for all funds, not including the utilities, we had compensated absences, and our footnotes mention it, a little over $7 million. A lot of that is vacation, because we book whatever has not been taken as of June 30. So most, not most, but a very high percentage of that is vacation. And then for sick leave, we, we book sick leave based on how long someone's been here, and whether or not it appears they're using, they're saving it up to use for retirement, and so we have a calculation for that. We don't book all sick leave, because there's a lot of people who will not take it, will leave without getting paid for it, or will retire and use it at that point, and that's how we calculate the sick leave.
Okay. Now, we will consider recommendations of the Assistant City Attorney with regards to procedures for approving fire hydrants and private fire lines. Mr. Ives?
Good evening again, Vice Mayor and members of council. This seems to have been the week for snake-bit attachments. Also on your desks tonight is a memo regarding this agenda item that has attached to it a, a later version of the developer agreement that was attached to the agenda materials. This had already been created well before this went out. I'm not sure how, I got two wrong documents in one week, but I managed to do that. The only difference between what went out to you and what's on your desk tonight is the addition of a sentence on paragraph, to paragraph six on the second page, and that's the sentence that allows the city, or CUD, to file a lien for, to protect their costs in the event that costs are expended by one of us and not promptly reimbursed by the developer, by the owner. To get then to the substance of this, the city's been approached several times in recent years to allow primarily apartment complexes to put in a master water meter at the property line, and then the entire water system within the apartment complex is private. We have resisted those and argued against it and have not done that in the past, and this is, by the way, only in areas where there's CUD water service. The city, city water department is, has no plan to allow such a private system. I don't know that I can say that'll never change, but at this point, this is only applicable to developments that are in the CUD water area. It's attractive to CUD because they're not required, well, in an ordinary apartment complex, CUD acquires all of the water infrastructure at the time of, such a time of completion, and then CUD is required to fund depreciation with cash. So they have a large asset on their books that they've got to annually fund depreciation for, and then by not acquiring that asset, then they don't have to fund that depreciation. It's attractive to the developers because they save some tap fees by just having one master meter, then they may sub-meter to their tenants, but that's up to them. As I said, we've resisted that in the past. CUD essentially announced a few months ago that they're planning to go forward with that, and it doesn't appear that we have any legal or other basis in which to prevent them from doing it. We searched some other, we, on a combination of the fire department, the water and sewer department, legal department, made some inquiries of other cities where this has happened, got some documents from them, and then that group, along with planning and engineering, put together this agreement that we will have the developer sign at the start of the project if they're intending to have a private water line system. We have less concern with the water that goes to the kitchen tap in an apartment complex. Our, I mean, that's a concern, of course, to everyone, but the big concern from the city's standpoint is the safety of the people and the property, protecting the health and welfare in the event of a fire. So we want to make sure that the water lines, and particularly the fire service lines, are properly installed, properly inspected, properly maintained and tested, so that we know that in the event of a, of an incident, that we're going to have water available to our fire department to, to, to deal with it. As I said, this agreement will have to be executed by the owner or the developer for the owner, and it has to be prior to any construction. We will let them start grading, but they will not be able to bring combustibles on-site or get a building permit to actually start any construction until this is signed and received back by the city. It requires that they will have an ability, and it's going to be through an outside consultant or a fire safety consultant or engineer, to certify that the system is designed properly, that it's installed properly, and then we will have, we, the fire department, will have the ability to go on-site. This will grant us the ability to go on-site to test and actually perform maintenance if it's, if we think it's needed and they're not being responsive. One of the issues that in a traditional public system, even if it's CUD, the fire lines, all the water lines get put in public utility easements. If it's a private system, there will not be a public utility easement, and without an agreement such as this, there might be a challenge as to the right of our fire department to go on-site to, to test these facilities. I think the whole city, and fire and rescue especially, would prefer to keep doing it the way we have been, but it didn't appear that we really have a choice. After this is put together, we're confident that we will be able to protect the integrity of the firefighting apparatus and systems, and that this is a good, a good approach to assure that that happens. We did present this to the planning commission last night, since obviously this involves development that the planning commission has authority over, and the planning commission last night did agree and did recommend that this be adopted, approved by council. Fire department, fire chief is here, and fire marshal, if they have, I don't know if they have anything they'd want to add, or if you have any questions that involve fire apparatus, they could certainly more easily respond to that than I can.
Thank you, Ms. Ives. Council members, do you have any questions of the city attorney? Not what is your pleasure?
No questions, Vice Mayor, I may approve the recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Gilly. Second. Ms. Right, Carter Rose.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Consider for adoption Resolution 12, thank you, Ms. Ives. Consider for Resolution 12-R-11, authorizing application for a local Parks and Recreation Fund grant from the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation to assist renovation of the Westview Mini Park, and committing matching funds in the amount of $75,000 if awarded, the LPRF grant. Ms. Jackson?
Good evening. I'd like to talk with you this evening about Westview Mini Park. This is a park that I know many of our residents are not aware of. It is a very small park, just 1.4 acres, and it's located at 111 February Street. If I could direct your attention to the map, you can see here, Westview Mini Park. To the north is Main Street, at the intersection of February and Main, to the south is Smith Street. Westview Mini Park is very near the Franklin Heights housing area. There is also another area there called Midtown Estates, that's something that I believe a lot of people refer to as Section 8 housing, a, a small neighborhood. There's a lot of families that live in the neighborhood with, with a lot of young children, and this park currently offers minimal recreation opportunities. I'm going to show you some photos of the park as well, if I could. This is, we, I've said before, we have many fine facilities in our city, parks that we're very proud of, but we also have Westview Mini Park. It is, as I said, just 1.4 acres, a, a small area now with, with not a lot to offer. The city obtained the property and turned it into a park in the mid-'70s. It has had a few pieces of playground equipment. What we would like to do at this time is, is do a renovation. We have put together some preliminary site plans to include a small playground, swings, some natural elements, landscaping, a, a small walking path, bicycle, tricycle-type path that would, that would circle the park. Before we would get to the stage of really finalizing those plans, there would be a lot to, a lot to go through. We are actually, at this point, we have requested in the 2012 capital improvement program, we've requested $75,000 for the renovation of that mini park. What I'd like to do is apply for a grant, it's an LPRF grant, a Local Parks and Recreation Fund grant, through the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation. This grant requires a 50% match from the city, so it would be a $150,000 project if we are awarded the grant, and the city would contribute $75,000 from our capital improvement. As I said, this is something that we have requested, and what we would be doing tonight basically was, would be committing those funds through a resolution if we receive the grant in the future. The timeline of this, we would not request that to be moved forward, it would be three or four months probably before we would hear whether or not we receive the grant, at some additional time before we would be awarded that contract. If we are awarded the contract to proceed, we would have 180 days before we would be required to start the project. So the timeline would not move forward any from that capital program. We would, however, ask that you pass the resolution tonight, Resolution 12-R-11, to commit the grant funds for the project.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson, I have to wonder how much Mr. Bratcher had to do with some of this.
I, I actually did call Mr. Bratcher, just in researching the park, trying to learn more about the area, find out if there was any history that I, that I needed to know about, and talked with a couple of our staff members who, who grew up in the area and were familiar with the park. I've also talked to our, some staff members that didn't even know that was a park, so I'm sure the rest of the community might be surprised as well. It, it's something that, that doesn't offer a lot now, but it really has the potential to serve a, a very valuable need to that community, to, to offer some space right there in a, in a good, prime, walking residential area for a lot of kids.
Thank you. Council members, any discussion? If not...
This park is, we, we just finished up Kids Castle, and it's wonderful. And, and I guess my question is, the, the availability of the people who would use this park, I think it's less than a mile away from Kids Castle where it's currently located.
It is, yes.
And, and I know we'd love to do this at Rogers Park as well. Is there, is there a plan for all the parks to kind of get this type treatment, or are we just going to go through and kind of willy-nilly pick them? I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to, to, to pick on this suggestion, but it seems to be awfully close to the current park that we just spent $300,000 on.
It, it is very close to, to Old Fort Park, like you mentioned, less than a mile. Old Fort Parkway is in between this park, in between this neighborhood and Kids Castle. What the pedestrian opportunity for, for this neighborhood, we're not looking to repeat a large playground. A playground would be a small aspect, but a significant aspect to the park improvements. We would do some, some additional things to really make site improvements to this park and to make it, you know, something that, that would be a, an immediate benefit to the neighborhood. We would not look at this necessarily as a destination park from other areas of the community. A lot of towns have, a lot of people call them pocket parks, or vest pocket parks, just something that is small, serving a close and easily accessible need, especially for those without transportation.
Additionally, Mr. Smotherman, the Parks and Recreation budget this year is going to include some funding for a master plan. That's something Mr. Goodwin's been very anxious to get started on. So in addition to what we do in the annual budget, and then our five-year look at capital projects, I think he's wanting to step out and see where we're going with recreation facilities, programs, and offerings to the community, so that's something that'll be coming down the pipe for us in the upcoming year.
And is the potential pretty good that we might be able to, when we bid this out, bid it so that it's apples to apples, so that everybody who bids on this thing, say a local vendor might want to have an opportunity to bid on it? Can they bid on this thing? We're not going to do like we did on Kids Castle and have apples and oranges and people bidding on different projects.
We, we would not approach that park in the same way that we did Kids Castle. We would look to work with an architect firm, to do a design, and to oversee that project.
City, any other discussion?
I, I do think the good thing, you know, it's sort of weird, because this is my first meeting, not having been on the Parks and Recreation Commission. I mean, as far as sitting up there for six years, and I think the, the Kids Castle, the good thing is receiving the matching grant, which hopefully we would get here, you know, although it was a $300,000 park, we only had, I won't say only, but it cost the, the city call for $150,000, so the, I mean, the taxpayers paid $300,000, whether it's from state or whoever, but the good thing is it's something we would be doing here, and I think it is important that we look at, that we, in this area, I think the likelihood of someone going across Old Fort Parkway to get to Kids Castle would be unlikely to go across a five-lane road, so I do think that trying to find these areas within communities to do that, not just this area, but improving all of them across the board, I do think is a good idea. So with that, I'd make a motion that we approve.
Second. Carter Rose is right.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Item 13, Consider Recommendations of the Chief of Police with regards to the purchase of portable and mobile two-way radios and accessories. Welcome, Mr. Chief Chris.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. Chief Gaines is joining me here. We are here tonight to ask you to consider two portions of an item on your agenda. The first one would be for you to approve the purchase of two-way radios and accessories from Motorola Incorporated, as outlined in the materials that have been provided to you, and to authorize a refunding resolution, a number 12-R-12, not to exceed $2.450 million for the purchase of those radios. Just before our meeting started, Deputy Chief Bowen, I think, passed around a color brochure for your information purposes, that has some photographs of the equipment that we'll be talking about, and also has some specifications there. We did not have radios to bring to show you tonight, so we wanted you to be... area, but improving all of them across the, the board, I do think, um, is a good idea. So, um, with that, I'd make a motion that we approve.
Second.
Call the Rose, Ms. Reich.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye. Item thirteen, consider recommendations of the chief of police with regard to the purchase of portable and mobile two-way radios and accessories. Welcome, Mr. Chief Christman.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. Chief Gaines is joining me here. Uh, we are here tonight to ask you to consider, uh, two portions of an item on your agenda. The first one would be for, uh, you to approve the purchase of two-way radios and accessories from Motorola Incorporated as outlined in the materials that have been provided to you and to authorize a refunding resolution, uh, number twelve dash R dash twelve not to exceed two point four five zero million dollars for the purchase of those radios. Just before, uh, our meeting started, Deputy Chief Bowen, I think, passed around a color brochure, uh, for your information purposes that has some photographs of the equipment that we'll be talking about, and also has some specifications there. Um, we did not have radios to bring to show you tonight, so we wanted you to be able to see what they looked like and what it was that we were proposing to you. Um, as all of you know, uh, one of the things that we have been actively discussing and researching for some time for police and fire is the next generation of two-way public safety radio equipment. Uh, the system that we are operating on now was, was designed around an infrastructure in the mid nineteen seventies. Uh, for the police side, that, that original, uh, two-way radio design was funded with Law Enforcement Assistance Administration grant money, which goes back, uh, to the early nineteen seventies and beyond. Since then, we have updated that equipment, uh, we've replaced portable radios and mobile radios, um, but we, we have known for some time that we were headed to a kind of a point of no return with two-way radio for public safety, and we've been very deliberate and spent a lot of time, our staffs have, uh, researching these issues and trying to make sure that as we move forward, we will be able to put in the hands of our firefighters and police officers the very best of the two-way radio equipment available to serve not only their public safety needs, but the needs of our city and our citizens for the next generation. And we begin that process tonight, uh, with your support and that of our city manager and our staff. If the refunding resolution and this purchase request is approved tonight, it would secure funding through the upcoming 2012 capital improvement plan budget for the purchase of portable and mobile two-way radios and accessories for Murfreesboro Police and Fire and Rescue Departments. Uh, the purchase, this initial purchase would fund, uh, the replacement of all of our portable radios. If you, those of you that have been a part of Citizens Police Academy, or if you've done ride-alongs or have been a part of, uh, the Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue Academy, you know that in today's communication world, uh, emergency communications is done via a radio portable handset that is on a belt or mounted to a duty rig. Uh, most often, the communication is made using a microphone that's attached to an epaulet or a shirt collar. Uh, the mobile radio that is in the police vehicle or in the fire vehicle is used to communicate to and from the call response, but when our firefighters and our police officers are out in the field, they're talking on walkie-talkings. So as all of the two-way radio manufacturers for public safety has redesigned their fleets, they have put, uh, a great deal of development, uh, and research into making those portable radios really the go-to piece, if you will, for two-way radio communication. And what we propose to purchase tonight is, is that product exactly. Uh, this particular product line that's being offered from Motorola, Chief Gaines and I believe is a state-of-the-art. Uh, it's the very best in two-way radio communication for law enforcement, uh, and fire and rescue. And we believe that if we invest in this two-way radio system, it will, uh, basically take care of what our two-way radio needs are going to be for the next generation. Uh, most of these products have a ten to twelve-year lifespan before you begin to look at any substantive improvements or changes, and the infrastructure that we will talk to you later that will come behind these, I think will last well beyond that. These products are included on the statewide contract, uh, through the Government Services Administration of, uh, State of Tennessee, and, um, we will be buying off of that statewide contract, and therefore we're asking you to waive the bid process for the purchase, uh, for, for the purpose of these purchases. One of the questions that you might ask is, well, why now? I know we've talked about this as a part of the capital improvement program, uh, for 2012. Uh, we've worked closely with Mr. Lyons and his staff to get ready for that. Uh, several weeks ago, we had, uh, a, an opportunity presented to us from Motorola, uh, where basically on top of about a twenty-five percent, uh, discount that is made on those radios to get them onto the state bid contract, they offered to discount them about another 12% uh, by a time certain. That time certain, uh, ends tomorrow. Uh, in order to do that for this particular purchase, they also had to open that discount pricing up to any other government purchaser, uh, in the state of Tennessee, and so they have done that. So the reason that we're here tonight, asking you to authorize a refunding resolution in part, is to allow us to take advantage of some significant price decreases in the purchases of these portable radios. Uh, from a mission-critical standpoint, these radios are the most important pieces to replace first, because it'll put, uh, state-of-the-art equipment in the hands of your police officers and firefighters now. Um, the second reason that, that we ask you to do this is that, um, the federal government has put in place a, a mandate to ensure that all, uh, public safety radio equipment is narrow-band compliant by January of 2013. Uh, that is a tedious and, uh, time-intensive process to go through and touch every single radio, reprogram all those radios to make sure that they're narrow-band compliant. By going ahead and purchasing these radios now, they'll be narrow-band compliant pretty much when they arrive. Uh, that will save some time and labor, not only for the police and fire and rescue staffs, but also our, uh, radio suppliers, uh, and go ahead and get those radios compliant. We will have to still do some narrow-band compliance work with part of our mobile fleet, uh, but there's also some funding in here to replace some of our mobile radios that may not be narrow-band compliant, um, um, to get them in compliance with what the federal regulations require. In moving to, uh, the new radio system, one of the things that we will come back to you as we continue to discuss, uh, the capital improvement budget, will be to follow this purchase, uh, with an additional expenditure to build out the rest of the radio system, add some towers, uh, and, and transition police and fire from UHF and VHF radios respectively, uh, to seven hundred, eight hundred megahertz technology. That's the gold standard for public safety in the United States of America now. Um, in Rutherford County, uh, the city of Murfreesboro and, and the Rutherford County Sheriff's Department are the only two law enforcement agencies that have not transitioned already to seven hundred, eight hundred megahertz technology. And, um, uh, we are excited about moving in that direction, and we'll talk more with you about that as we go into the capital improvement process. Uh, tonight, we recommend to you that, uh, uh, we'd be allowed to waive the bid process purchase off of the state contracts, and that the council approve the refunding resolution twelve dash R twelve as it's proposed, not to exceed that two point four five million. And Chief Gaines and I'd be glad to answer any questions you have about any of those items.
All right. Mr. Lyons, you have anything to add?
Yeah, I might just add, um, as you know, you'll have your workshop in the city's capital improvement plan on July the twenty-sixth. Uh, we've been working with our department heads for some time about the priority, uh, list of projects, and as Chief Christman had indicated, uh, our public safety communications has been a priority. Uh, this was clearly going to be one of the, uh, first projects we were looking to fund in the capital improvement plan, so what, uh, both chiefs have presented to you this evening is very consistent with that. That was going to be our recommendation, that this be included in October. This was an opportunity for us not only to save money on the purchase, but to assist in, uh, in the narrow-band, uh, compliance, and so, uh, it does come to you with our, uh, strong recommendation.
Vice Mayor, what's the timeframe on delivery?
Uh, if we, assuming that everything's approved and we place an order tomorrow, uh, they anticipate delivery before the end of July.
I think it's wonderful that we're able to save 12%. I mean, that's taxpayers' money. We're talking about a lot of money here. The, um, which radio are you referring to when you talk about the radios? Is, is there a model code or a number?
The, the radio I think that you have, Mr. Smotherman, is the, uh, it's the APX seven thousand.
Uh-huh.
And, uh, the APX seven thousand XE, and if you'll look at, if you have those color photographs there, the APX seven thousand is the top of the Motorola line, uh, for law enforcement purposes, and the APX, uh, seven thousand XE is the ruggedized fire department radio. And one of the things I asked Chief Gaines a few weeks ago when we were talking about these is if that was the best of the radio equipment that he was aware of for fire service, and he believes it is, and certainly I think that seven thousand is the best radio for law enforcement purposes.
I'm of the impression that some of the larger cities are, are actually going away from the mobile or, or the units on the cars and simply going to these radios. Are we going to get to that point maybe at some point, or do you think we will continue to have the mobile units?
I think, uh, right now, uh, I think we'll continue along the path of looking at both. The mobile units are not as costly as the handhelds are, uh, and, and keeping in, in line with that thought process, I think, uh, much more of the technology and development of the product has gone into the handhelds. So there may very, very well be a trend in that direction. Um, I think that's something we'll, we'll continue to look at as we move forward.
Okay, because there might be an additional cost savings, I guess is what I'm saying there, if we were to get to the point with this technology that we were able to eliminate the, the actual units on the vehicles. I, I think it's great.
Any other discussion?
And that's a little over quarter million dollars in additional savings at the map.
Correct, isn't it?
Uh, that sounds pretty close. Yes, sir.
Well, and we're already saving 25% on, so it's 37% total. Does that sound right?
Yes. The original, uh, and this may be more information than you need, but, uh, on the law enforcement radio, the list price of that radio is almost eighty-two hundred dollars. By the time it's discounted, it's about fifty-seven hundred, uh, and a fire radio is about sixty-two, which is, uh, it's a ruggedized radio, so it's a little more expensive, but significant savings that they've offered.
That's great.
Move for approval.
Second.
Call the Rose, Ms. Reich.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Vice Mayor, if I could, before we finish, uh, there's some people here who have worked tirelessly to put this together and who have done the research and development, and Chief Gaines and I'd just like to recognize them. Um, Fire Marshal Ken Honeycutt is here from Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue. Uh, Marshal, would you stand? And Commander Tim Swan is not here tonight, but, uh, those two represented the fire department and will continue to do that as we continue moving forward with the development of the plan that we will bring you later for, for the system-wide. Uh, and from the police department, Lieutenant Sanders Watson, sir, if you'd stand. Uh, he is in charge of purchasing and, and, uh, development for the police department. And Bill Terry back there is our MIS coordinator for the police department. They have lived and breathed this for now several years, and, uh, the work that's been put into this, and Mr. Gilli, as you rightly, uh, pointed out, the savings that are here is because of the work that they've done, working with Motorola and, uh, the statewide contract process, along with our legal department and our management staff. So, uh, gentlemen, thank you very much for the hard work. I know we have more ahead, but, uh, a great first step tonight. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor and councilmen.
Chief, I'd like to add just one thing real quick. You know, you, you talk, we walked through the criminal investigation division the other day, and we talk about how proud we are of our employees, and I, I would be remiss if I didn't say, um, not just in what they do inside the department. I see Mr. Terry out there, and not many people know, Mr. Terry was named volunteer of the year for the Murfreesboro Soccer Club, and anytime that you go out to the soccer field, you'll see Mr. Terry out there, and, uh, so I think it's something that we, we also need to recognize our employees, not just what they do at the city, but what they do outside the city. So, um, that's what makes, you know, Murfreesboro a great place to live, so, uh, just wanted to recognize Mr. Terry for, for that, that honor he received.
Outstanding. I think he was telling me as we walked in that Murfreesboro had been recognized as one of the top ten soccer venues in the country. So, great job to everybody.
Yeah, absolutely. Congratulations.
All right. Now with Consider for Adoption Resolution twelve dash R dash twelve, express an official intent that certain expenditure to be incurred in connection with certain public works projects and related expenditures for the purchase of portable and mobile radios for the Murfreesboro Police and Fire Rescue Departments to meet federal communications commissions mandates be reimbursed from proceeds of notes, bonds, or other indebtedness to be issued or incurred by the city of Murfreesboro.
Move for approval. Second.
Call the Rose, Ms. Reich.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye. Ms. Reich, do we have any bills?
Yes, sir, we do tonight. We have two convenience stores that have completed all of our requirements, uh, one at three fifty-two West Northfield Boulevard and one at, uh, twenty-eleven Southeast Broad Street. Both of these locations already exist, they just did not have beer there before, and so these are new locations. Uh, then I also have, in, in anticipation of perhaps missing a few meetings, uh, this, next week possibly, in the week of the fourth, I have three here that are very close, they're working on their, uh, they're building codes inspections currently. One is a, uh, convenience store pharmacy, I believe, um, at four forty South Saint Andrews Drive. It's a brand-new location, brand-new building, and one that's a change of ownership at two nine six two South Rutherford Boulevard, Suite H, and then a restaurant that is also a change of ownership at eleven forty-five Northwest Broad Street. These three, uh, have completed their background, but we just are waiting on the final building inspections.
All right, councilmembers, it's your pleasure.
Move for approval.
Second.
Ms. Reich, call the Rose.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye. Next, we have the payment of statements.
Move, we'll pay the bills. Second.
Call the Rose, Ms. Reich.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye. Next, we have the payment of statements.
Vice Mayor Washington, um, do you have one minor of other business, and that's another employee handbook change, but it is simply reflecting the change from the state in the workers' compensation benefit level, uh, from eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ninety cents to eight hundred and eighty-six dollars and sixty cents. Uh, this takes effect July one, and the figure was not available, uh, in time for the agenda, but would like to ask your approval of that at this time.
But that's statutory, and that's your...
It's statutory, it's not up to the city, but, uh, it, it changes each year. We, we do give notice to our employees through inclusion of it in the employee handbook, and we change it on an annual basis for July first of each year.
Thank you, Ms. McGinn. It's your pleasure, councilmembers.
Move for approval.
Second.
Call the Rose, Ms. Reich.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye. I have one announcement. Uh, the city is hosting a blood drive at the sports com on Thursday, July the fifth, for the public to, uh, to know about. Is there any other business to come to fore this council tonight? Have a safe weekend, and let's go home. Your turn.[1746.42]